Yeah, that's the one I'm kind of.
So I guess we're pulling one item, right?
Yeah.
All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Palmdale City Council. Today is Wednesday, September 18. Happy to have everyone here. Let's go ahead and start off with a roll call, please.
Mayor Bishop.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temloa.
Here.
Council members Olson.
Here.
Bettencourt.
Here.
And Alicon.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Temloa, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence?
Yes, thank you very much. Place the flag, place your hand over your heart, and repeat, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you, Mayor. And we did just pass the first anniversary of the murder of Deputy Klinkburner on the 16th of September.
That's right.
So.
Yeah.
We can close the meeting in his memory if you think so.
Absolutely. Let's go ahead and do that.
Okay.
All right. All right. Do we have a city attorney? Do we have anything to add to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Hello. Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We have a request to add an item to closed session. It is the case. Let me get it. Cruz Guerrero, a minor, by and through his guardian, Adlitem Yolanda Espinoza, versus City of Palmdale at all. A critical need for City Council authority as regards to the defense of this case arose today, mid-afternoon, after the agenda was posted, and our office believes it's advisable for the council to address it tonight. There is a need to take immediate action tonight, and we cannot defer to a future meeting date. There is an imminent trial date in mid-October, and we are seeking to avoid the trial via ongoing negotiations that will be advantageous for the city to consider. So what I am asking for is for you guys to vote on whether or not you want to add this item for closed session. We need a four-fifths vote to approve it, and if you approve it, we'll add it for closed session, and the attorneys handling the case will give you a presentation about what's going on with it.
All right. Was that an item that was on the calendar today in Department A14?
I don't. It wasn't on calendar today. I know that they had. Essentially, there's been extensive settlement negotiations ongoing, and because of this trial date in October, there may be ways to resolve the case without the city incurring a bunch of costs later on.
Okay, that's fine. There was a case this morning on the calendar there, and I didn't hear what was going on, but I don't know if it's the same matter or not.
No, it's not. And we also have another different case on closed session, but they shouldn't take too long, so.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, do we have consensus? Do we want to do a roll call vote or a voice vote?
I move to add. Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Okay, I move to add this item to the closed session.
All right. We have a motion, second. Let's do a, let's just do a.
Start voting.
There we go. You're quick. You got it in the computer quick.
Thank you.
All right, good job. Okay, so that's been added. And we're going to move on to the rules of public comment. And a participation statement.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Now is the time for public comments on Section 5, the entirety of it, and 10. Currently, we have no speaker cards on those items.
Okay, seeing none. Council members, would you like to pull any items from the consent calendar? 5.3. Pulling 5.3. Anything else?
5.6.
5.3 and 5.6.
And 5.2, please.
Okay. We have 5.2, 5.3, and 5.6. And then do we have a motion for the remaining balance?
I shall move to approve the balance.
I made, we just have a slight amendment to the, sorry, to 5.3, so I just want to make that aware.
Okay.
Oh, it's.
Got it.
So I move to.
We'll do that in the staff report.
To approve the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passed unanimously.
All righty. Takes us to item 5.2.
Do you want to do 5.3 first, since it's technical?
Let's take that, I don't care. Is Louis here? Is Louis here? On Zoom? Is he on Zoom right now?
Mayor, if we can just allow them an opportunity to connect Louis. If we can move to 5.3, since it's just a minor technical issue while they work out technical difficulties in 5.2.
Okay, let's go ahead and get Louis queued up. We're going to move on to 5.3. So.
So for 5.3, I don't need a full report. I just have an explanation of the adjustment here.
Yeah, do we have a staff report? There we go.
Mayor and council, this item, there was an amendment placed on the dais and out in the chambers this evening, an adjustment to the unclaimed checklist. What the city does is we post a list of unclaimed checks. We publicize it for 45 days prior to this council meeting, so it was posted August 2nd and 9th. During that 45-day period, it allows the public or anyone who has a check to claim the opportunity to come into the finance division and claim those unclaimed checks. So we adjusted that. The new dollar amount is, I think, $7,000. I'm sorry, I don't have the memo right in front of me. It's just over $7,000 that we're proposing to transfer to the general fund at this time. There was $9,000 in claimed checks.
This is the list that is the new updated proposal to transfer to the general funds?
No, that's not correct.
These are the ones being removed from the list. Okay.
They're being removed from the list.
That was the sole reason I pulled it is because we know vets for veterans. We know who they are, how to get a hold of them. The franchise tax board, I don't want to mess around with not paying them. So, good. Okay.
Those have all been cleared and are removed from the list.
All right, I have no issue then. Thank you.
Okay, so with, I will move item 5.3 with the recommendation that the items listed in the memo attachment, I don't know if there's an attachment number that was on this, but excluding the checks that have been itemized on this addendum to item 5.3.
Perfect. We have a motion with amendment. I'll second. We have a second, and we're off voting.
Start voting.
That was last time, that's the one I thought. Okay, yeah, all right. So they're gonna, we're going to rewind a little bit. Here we go, 5.2. And is Louis with us? Get him queued up, staff report, and we'll hear all about it.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Nardi Lopez, deputy city manager. We bring forward today an amendment to the agreement with the Wellbeing Lab, DBA Louis Aloro, to provide for mental health and well-being youth leadership sessions in 2025, and an appreciative inquiry mental health and well-being summit for an additional $170,000 to the agreement. We have Louis Aloro on the line, and he can provide additional information on what the mental health summits will include, the AI, the appreciative inquiry, and also the youth one. As we know, mental health is an ongoing, ongoing issue, right, and nationally, I have to say, but here locally as well. We've done surveys. We continue to hear the community. I think families, individuals, our community, right, is struggling with a lot of the issues that are taking place. Mental health ties into many things: substance abuse, graffiti, crime, homelessness. And I think it's important, right, to unite and work with our community in many ways to be able to share and provide resources. And I will invite Louis now so he can give a little update on what this will entail and how we are going to try and raise right up the efforts in 2025 for mental health.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for inviting us here tonight to talk about the additional work proposed for 2025. First is a community-wide prevention summit that would bring together practitioners and service providers who are working towards mental health and well-being prevention work, people that are working in suicide prevention, substance abuse prevention, mental illness prevention. But more broad than that, community leaders working in the prevention of chronic illnesses, cancers, autoimmune disorders, and even burnout from the prevention of workplace well-being. Really wanting a broad stroke at who is in the valley and particularly in Palmdale, addressing the needs of social stability and safety. People that are working for food security and housing security, people working to prevent financial ruin, prevent homelessness, right? There's the work to attend people who are already in need, people who are already homeless, people who are already with substance abuse. But there's also the work to prevent others in our community from needing these types of services. So a day and a half-long summit hosted by the City of Palmdale in partnership with many partners in the region and even the state to come together and have a facilitated conversation and to form self-organized working groups where together we could do more than in silos. And so the idea of an event like this would be to convene people, to organize people, and to execute in 2025, 2026, and beyond with slightly different precision. And that is the Community Wide Wellbeing Prevention Summit. The second unit of work. Yeah.
No questions. I didn't know if you were done.
Well, I could talk about the youth leadership, but why don't we just address this first event if you have questions, councilwoman?
No questions. I just didn't know if you concluded with your report. But yes, please talk about the Leadership Institute.
Okay, so the second, the second unit of work is to bring together youth leaders around the valley, hosted by the City of Palmdale, for a day-long workshop, experiential workshop that really gets them to think about their mental health and well-being in new ways and to work together to use the frameworks from applied positive psychology and well-being science to apply to their own lives and to have a different call to action, also for prevention, to give them some tools to cope with their life stressors. So that would be for teenagers 15, 16, 17, 18, and upper adolescents.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think, I believe it's been a success to date. I haven't seen the numbers of how many people have participated to now, but I believe that there's been substantial response, positive response to this. What I want to address is a serious problem that we're going to address through financing or funding with another project. And that is families that are dealing with persons with mental health who do not necessarily trigger the 51-50 response or the 51-51, the other sections there. And therefore, there's no intervention by the Met Team, even by the Deputy Sheriff's Department. I mean, the Sheriff's Department, I should say. And the family is, continues to struggle with that situation and dealing with outbursts that may come along from time to time. Eventually, those persons end up either in jail or homeless. And we are addressing that, but I don't know whether your program will address this in the summit and in the ongoing programs. Is that an issue that you would care to add to your curriculum? And if not, you know, why not? But then the other thing is that I believe that there is a widespread sense among the population that going to any kind of therapist, whether it's a psychologist or psychiatrist, is an embarrassing thing to do. It is going to call on people to look down on you if you have that kind of problem and you're seeking psychiatric help. I think that's an issue that is fairly widespread, not just here, but across the nation, I believe. It's sort of a stigma. Does the programming that you have include dealing with that and trying to overcome it? And maybe a public campaign that could be put together along with the City of Palmdale to reach out to the community and teach the people that those who may be thinking that way ought not to be thinking that way. It's like, if you have symptoms of a serious disease, you have no problem going to a cardiologist or oncologist or whatever. But in psychiatry, I think it's a little different. Those are my points.
Yeah, those are great points, Councilman Loa. That, I agree with you that the work to reduce the stigma is definitely, in part, this prevention summit will address and can address as people come together to see it as the widespread issue in a similar way, to identify the problem in a similar way, and then to work together for that kind of solution. I could also see that being a topic important to the youth to take on in their own work that would be separate, but also related. You know, there's the issue of mental illness and illness in general, people with heart disease, for example, or people with mental illness. And then there's the people who are not in need of cardiac care, but still need to prevent further or future challenges that might occur. Same is true for mental health. You know, there are people in the community that are kind of okay. They are the families that are maybe picking up some of the pieces when there is mental illness for some of the family members. But those other family members also swimming in that water need to be attended to, like you're saying. And when they don't qualify for the 51-50, I did see the RFP that was put out. I think it was yesterday I saw it for that, for that work, which is, which is very important. I think it is similar. It's related. But the work with the Wellbeing Lab is more to prevent future challenges, not to take away the fact that there are people with current challenges that also need to be addressed.
Thank you for that. So.
Thank you. So, well, I pulled, I pulled the item. So, may I, please? Thank you. So I pulled the item because this program is nothing but transformative. And I wanted to highlight the work that you, Nardi, are doing and that, Professor, you have been doing. Every single person that has gone through each cohort has said that it is life-changing, and they wish that they had gone through it many years prior, and they advise that everybody should go through it. And so this, what we have before here today is so important, and I wanted to highlight the fact that we are now expanding to incorporate the youth because sometimes our kids get forgotten and left behind, particularly in the aftermath of COVID. In the Antelope Valley, in particular, City of Palmdale, mental health indicators are skyrocketing. And our kids are struggling, and they don't quite know how to voice it. They don't quite know how to manage it and sort of reintegrate back into social, you know, and learn socialization skills because they were locked up behind a screen for so long. It's been difficult for them, and so I think this is a really, really important step that we're taking. And I know we're going to have just as transformative of an effect on the youth in our community as we've had on our community leaders who've already graduated from this cohort. So I just want to say thank you, and I wish you guys nothing but the best of luck moving forward. If there is no other conversation, I'd be happy to move the item.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and second. I'll say a comment. I was here since the inception of the program. Luis, and I think a few of us were. Luis, your services along with the Wellbeing Lab have been an asset to our community. I think this is excellent use of ARPA funding, and it's a good, it's a good program that reflects our values of the City of Palmdale. With this, we're trying to be proactive instead of reactive. A lot of our services, especially like with SAVES, is we're trying to help people before it gets to that point of no return. Unfortunately, that does happen, and those numbers are continuing to happen, not throughout our, not only throughout our city, but throughout the entire country. But we're trying to help people. We're trying to be preventative and kind of just kind of catch them before it takes a downturn. So I think this program does just that, and I'm fully supportive of it. Okay, so we have a motion and second. I think we're ready to vote.
Start voting.
Thank you.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right. Moving on. I think we polled 5.6. Is that our next one, right?
That is correct. I polled it because I have to recuse myself.
Okay.
So I'll go in the back and just come and get me when you're done.
All right.
If there's nothing else, I'll move to approve the items.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on 5.6.
5.6? I'm leaving, right?
Yeah, give her a second to leave. She's still there. Get her in the quiet room. I'm gonna wait for that door to shut.
There we go.
All right, there it goes. All right, we have a motion and a second. Pass is 4-1, or 4-0 with Councilmember Bettencourt recusing herself. Should we go get her?
Yes, I'll get her.
All right.
Well, they came loaded for bear, didn't they?
They did.
Thank you for coming, gentlemen.
Thanks for coming. Enjoy the drive. All right, so that takes us to public hearing. Item 6.1. Receive public testimony regarding the renewal of public Palmdale Tourism Improvement District. So if necessary, do we have a staff report? If we need one. If not, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing and receive public testimony.
Okay, we have Christian Barrow.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Ms. Christian Barrow, I manage the residence in the courtyard here in Palmdale. I also sit on the Visit Palmdale Board alongside Mayor Bishop here. So I wanted to share some of the positive impact that we have had with the TID and Visit Palmdale. With just some of the events that we have been able to sponsor or host, we've been able to increase just on the hotel side. I want to share the hotel side and some of the positive impact on the community as well. But on the hotel side, what we've been able to do is generate over 150-plus room nights and over $20,000 of revenue. This is specifically done on weekends when we're historically known to be slower in the market because we're such a corporate market. In addition to that, these same events and these same events that we host, we are also able to support local businesses because they're able to become vendors at these same events. And with the influx of tourism, we're able to bring more people into those establishments, the restaurants, you know, malls, shops, and things like that. So I'm a little bit competitive as well, so I wanted to share that we've also seen a positive impact where we've been able to shift some business from Lancaster into Palmdale. So if you are looking for one reason to renew the TID, I think that's the one right there. But we're far from done. We have a lot of, a lot of things we're trying to do and reinvest in some of the public, or not public, but the safety and security of some of our hotels in the surrounding areas. We're looking to reinvest in that. Some of our public parks, we're looking to do that, increase the safety and security. Specifically, when we have our sports tournaments that are a very big boost to our local economy, we want to make sure that we secure that business as well. So we're far from done. We know this is a beautiful place to call home. We have to show that. And the way to do that is to bring the visitors, and that's where we come in. So we're looking to continue our partnership. We're looking to get your support. So that's all I really have. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
We have Rory Casala.
Good evening. So I just want to reiterate Christian's comments on everything. The program has been very beneficial to the hotels in the area. I've only been here for approximately two years, actually, two years of last week. And everything working with them has increased, helping us get to know what's coming back, especially coming out of COVID. At last, or the beginning of this year, the whole Hollywood strikes and everything, bringing back all of the production crews and just keeping us informed on who's coming back and where we need to reach out to. Also, I raised concerns a couple weeks ago, months ago, regarding some of the unhoused and issues, and they were very quick to step up and put us in contact with, how can we help our hotels and surrounding businesses with some of the concerns of safety and security? And so they've been a tremendous help and assistance in everything that we've needed and to bring more business to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speaker cards on this item.
Okay. Do we need to close the public hearing? I guess yes. All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And let's go ahead and have a discussion. If anyone wants to have any questions or any comments?
Just for the, because this is a public hearing for the benefit of the public, can we just get a brief staff report overview on what action it is that's before us today?
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
People. Megan Taggart, I am the Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development, and I also serve as the Executive Director for Visit Palmdale. So this item is intended basically for public input on renewal of the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District, which is known as the PTID, and there is no formal action to be taken this evening. And there is no formal action to be taken this evening. State law requires that the renewal come before you a total of three times. The first time it came before you in August at your meeting on the 21st. And that's where the resolution of intention was adopted to start this renewal process. And then we'll bring it back before you for consideration next month. And that will be the final action that will be taken on the item. The program is currently funded through a 2% assessment of all of our lodging businesses. And funds are usually, excuse me, utilized for services, destination marketing, tourism promotion, much like what our hotel partners were saying. We reach out to sports organizations, we coordinate with events and try to bring people and tourism to our communities specifically during weekend times where room stays are a little bit slower for our hotel partners. And renewal of the PTID will allow our longer-term programs to continue running course. So attracting and retaining special events that want to become annual special events, building upon our partnerships with the Air Force Base and all of our local community groups, and just improving infrastructure that will help build our destination. So one thing I did want to note that our hotel partners did not say is that assessed hotels that are in favor of renewing the PTID, the state law only requires that 50% of the assessment has to be, a petition has to be submitted by 50% of those being assessed. And we received up to 80%. So while only two of them are here this evening, I think it's important to note that we do have the buy-in from our, our hotel partners. And that's all I have. Any questions for me?
I would just say.
I would.
Yeah.
I think it's an effective program and beneficial to our partners and the hotel industry up here. And I hope that it's also helping the smaller hotels. And I know that we had them included, that they're benefiting from this program as well. We're not in competition in this business to take away business from Lancaster. What we want to do is we want to bring in from out of the area and to promote our area. Whether they go to Palmdale or Lancaster, the, the thing is to bring them to our region. That's what we want to do. And we're building more hotels. I mean, they're going up right now. And, and I think they're very attractive facilities here. But my point is that we are acting as a region along with our neighbor to the north. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say it's, it's been a few years since we've had this board and I'm glad that we still have the support. We've had the support in the beginning from our hotel partners. It's nice to know we still have their support. I think it's incredibly beneficial for Palmdale and the Antelope Valley to have the, these T-Bid boards to try to get people from out of the, from LA or, or out of the valley up here. We're talking about more events. We've got some big plans for more events and more partnerships with events coming to town. So I think it's a good opportunity to drive more business into town.
And before you run away, I just want to say thank you to you. And in this position, you serve in two roles, right? You, you, you serve the city in one capacity. And here you are serving as the Executive Director of the district. So thank you for your leadership and for moving it forward.
And, and she's our Rural Olympics champion. That's, that's something else.
Okay. I'll move to approve the item.
Okay.
I'll second.
There's no action on the side.
Oh, that's right, there's no action. Well, if there were action, I'd move to approve it.
And I will second it.
You have our support.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that takes us to item number seven, the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bear with me, there's a lot to cover tonight. I'd like to just give a shout out for a few events that have happened in the last couple of weeks that were very poignant. First and foremost, the Eric Garcia Foundation Mental Health Awareness Candlelight Vigil was held here in Ponsonlon Square, was beautifully done and very well attended. This, this vigil allows the community to come together and join and, and light a candle in remembrance of those that we have lost by suicide and all of those that are affected by suicide, which seems to be happening sadly more and more. That being said, on a little bit lighter note, we celebrated the 30th anniversary of Palmdale Playhouse. That was a wonderfully beautiful event and well-attended. It is such a jewel here in the City of Palmdale and for the Antelope Valley. And we hope it will be here another 30 years to come. So thank you for staff that worked so hard on that program and that project. We continue to offer the city's farmers market through the end of the month. And Tequila and Taco, Tequila, that's a new word. Tequila and Taco Festival will be happening this weekend, Saturday, September 21st and Sunday, September 22nd. This is a partnership between the hotels and Visit Palmdale, just like we talked about.
That's what I was getting at.
That comes, that comes to the community each year and hopefully fills up the hotels and everybody has a good, safe time. We've also got the fair coming, the 25th through the 29th. Please visit our local auto mall for tickets if you would like to attend. We have the District One Neighborhood Watch happening on Friday, September 27th. This is the third of our five that we will get done before the end of the year. So please come out and join us at Anna Verde Park. And then we have a Day of Service Desert Cleanup on September 28th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on Avenue M and 75th West. I'm most excited to talk about one other thing tonight, actually a few things. But at the last council meeting, we talked quite a bit about 20th East and the fast roadway that that is. And I didn't want to announce anything at the time because we weren't sure yet. But we, the very next day in the evening, were awarded a $5.3 million grant for project, for Safe Streets for All and specific to that very corridor. So we're so excited to receive that huge win for the City of Palmdale and we'll start getting, working on that right away. While I have your attention, I would also like to queue up the cute critter that we missed a little bit earlier.
Eric wants the turtle.
They're a lot of work. My mother-in-law has three of them.
Don't you say that, I'm going home with the turtle.
They're a lot of work. And last but not least, we'd also like to provide an update on some of the street improvements. I appreciate the community's patience on 10th Street West. That is our major thoroughfare. And I know it's been rough for a few weeks, but it is officially repaved and beautiful. And we're going to show a video courtesy of our mayor. Sometimes you don't realize how bad it is until it's better. So thank you again to the community. I know it's been a rough few weeks, but it's done and we just have to stripe it. And thank you, Council, for supporting that project.
Yeah, I would get emails from people saying there's rocks flying up from wheels and.
And, and thank you for 35th Street East, it's finally completed. And they went ahead and did the lines on it and they've added a bike lane to that also. So thank you very much from District 3.
All right. Okay. Council reports. Yes, of course.
Thank you. So I'm just going to dovetail off of our city manager. Because it's such an exciting award of a grant, $5.3 million of federal dollars are going to be invested on the east side of Palmdale, 20th Street East Corridor. It is going to bring, I mean, she spoke about it and it's exciting. It's going to bring new sidewalks, new lighting, new crosswalks, I mean, bike lanes. It is going to transform that corridor of our community. I'm so proud. It's going to affect three schools. And I didn't know you guys were going to be here today, but Tamarisk Elementary, we've got Sage Academy and Palmdale High. That area is, is highly traversed, thousands of students. I mean, if you're there when these schools get out, kids are everywhere. And the safer we, we make that, that area, the better off our entire community will be. So it is such an exciting award and a victory for our community in the east side in Council District 5. So thank you to the staff who moved it forward. And thank you to all the parents who, and teachers and faculty, one for being here, two for all that you do, but for just continuing to be advocates for our kids. You're, you're the voices and the folks that, that really are making a difference out there. So thank you.
You're next, Eric.
Sure. One thing that I just briefly wanted to mention during our conversation with the Well Being Lab. If you've been paying attention to social media or the news, there's been quite a few lockdowns at schools lately due to fights, due to just all sorts of things. You know, mental health is a real thing. It is affecting the younger generations at a higher rate, more so than ever in history with social media, with COVID, with their ever-changing way of living and the stress it is to be a kid these days. So I'm happy that we approved that. We need to give kids better mechanisms to cope. We need to have an understanding that mental health is real. And to Mayor Pro Tim's point, reaching out, seeing somebody is not a sign of weakness. That's a sign of strength. So I'm just happy with our action that we took there. That being said, November 5th, on our ballots, or October 5th, whenever they mail them out to you, soon, ballots are coming out soon. The election's November 5th. You will see on there, Measure PD. It's a Palmdale Essential Service Measure, PD for Palmdale Dollars. What we're, what this measure says is that it gives you a choice whether you want your tax dollars to stay local or you want them to go to the county LA. That's all I can say about it. So choose wisely, please.
All right.
Well, thank you for making that statement. Keeping money local. Measure H, which has been in place since 2017, has raised millions and millions of dollars from the Antelope Valley. And we get a pittance in return. In the, in the meantime, the homeless population, that was approximately 25,000 to 27,000 when that was enacted, has now almost tripled to 70,000. So we've spent billions of dollars in Los Angeles County to address the issue of homelessness. And it seems that that tax money was like throwing gasoline on the fire. It has not been effective. We believe that here in the City of Palmdale, we can use our money more wisely to address issues that are of local concern, including homelessness, which as has been pointed out many times, is caused by mental disease. And I believe that we have much better opportunity to wisely spend and dedicate resources here locally than the county of LA. So again, that measure is on the tax, on the ballot on November the 5th. And we encourage you to make your choice whether to keep money local or to keep sending it down to Los Angeles County. Thank you.
All right.
So. Sure.
Okay, let's take a brief 10-minute recess.
Thank you.
And we'll pick this back up shortly.